I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands. Thank you. The board secretary will call.
Mr. Balfour. Here, Mrs. Baccano.
Here.
Mr. Bishala.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Syax.
Here.
Mr. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. Rukuya.
Here.
Mrs. Kraft.
Here.
And Mr. McEnroe.
President. Not without honor, we have a couple of presentations this evening.
Yes, Mr. Brown and Mr. Kraft and Mrs. Kraft, I ask that you come forward, this way, are your students ready?
While they're setting up, Mr. Board Secretary, can you just go on to the board and talk about the close session?
This evening, close session on the negotiations, SEA grievance 42A, the Sayarville Education Association memorandum of agreement, under return and client privilege, Sayarville education member suspension, education of displaced students, under personnel agenda item no discussion, and no discussion of the student discipline for hit reports. I suggest that the board members, there is a slideshow that will go on with us as well, if you want to get up in front. Mr. Kraft, you're at the floor, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Please rise for the national.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, o'er the shires and bright stars the pallor must fight, for the rapid wat'rous, so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, that as the sun will burn our yet white, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
Thank you. The dictionary defines heroes as people who are admired or idealized for courage, outstanding achievements, or noble qualities. Today, our society recognizes many as heroes for their exploits in the arena of sports, movies, or music. Certainly, there are many in these fields that are worthy of praise for their talents and dedication, but tonight, we sing for true heroes, and most especially, those who we proudly call Sayarville heroes. We sing for those who have walked these halls that we take for granted every day. We sing for those who give, or have already given, of themselves for others, whether it be in our nation's military, as members of our police forces, fire departments, EMT services, and other first responders. We sing for those in our homes and community who fight quietly, yet valiantly, against terrible diseases, racism, and ignorance. We sing for those who are the epitome of Sayarville strong, whose faces may never grace a magazine or a television or a magazine cover. Tonight, we sing the song for unsung heroes.
Let us sing for unsung heroes, those who answer freedom's call; those united by one purpose, all for one and one for all. We will sing and not be silenced, we will keep our voices strong; for as long as we keep singing, freedom's pride will still live on. Sing the song for unsung heroes, sing from sea to shining sea; as the faithful sang before you, sing the song of liberty. Sing the song of liberty! By country, sing of thee, sweet land of liberty, on thee I sing. Sing of thee! And where thy forests died, land of the billions gained; from every mountain side, let freedom bring. Let us sing the song of freedom, sing the song of liberty, America!
Mr. Kraft, just an absolutely fantastic job.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the children of just done a fantastic job, the students. Mr. Brown, thank you very much, you certainly made the meeting. I know Mr. McEnroe likes to talk about, this is an honor of balance, so maybe, Mr. McEnroe, you'd like to say a few words, and we're going to have this.
Well, James, I really appreciate that, and I salute you. Any thanks out here, any thanks you'd like? Thanks, I appreciate your service. Thanks, boys, and you're down Thanksgiving with your family, I know everybody likes to talk about, you go around the table, and you know, what are you thankful for? And I think we all need to be thankful that we have an all-volunteer military, that we have veterans, we have people willing to go out there and defend our freedoms abroad, and you know, never, you know, put out a perspective that the nation is still at war. And there's going to be people that are not having Thanksgiving dinners at home, or in some forward observation locations, somewhere in Afghanistan, other parts of the world, that you don't get to know about or read in the paper. And just kind of be mindful of that as you go through Halloween season. Thank you.
Thank you, James. James, appreciate it, thank you very much. For our second presentation, this will be just as exciting, our analysis of our test scores for this New Jersey ASPE, HESPA, for last year and 2012 school year. And I'll give you Mr. Teichner, the assistant superintendent, who will make this presentation, as well as Mr. Fessendo, who is handing out some of the PowerPoint lectures, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Fessendo is passing out hard copies of the PowerPoint, it will also be available online on the district website tomorrow, okay? Every year, we are required to report to both the boards and the public about the assessment results on standardized tests. And those include the HESPA, the New Jersey ASPE, we also address the biology competency test, AP exams, and SATs. This will give you an overview of how Sayarville is doing on its own, and as compared to other schools across the state. For many years, you probably heard this talk, especially if you've ever heard these presentations before that AYP. Well, two years ago, New Jersey was granted a waiver under No Child Left Behind, and we do not have to, there's no more adequate yearly progress. If you remember, you may not, but by 2014, 100% of the students were supposed to be proficient in language arts and math by 2014. And there were sanctions for schools who did not meet the progress towards achieving those goals. We had several schools that, you know, we had a little bit of trouble from year to year, meeting those goals, but there were some schools who had significant problems within the state of New Jersey. Sayarville did not have significant issues with that. However, two years ago, with the waiver that was granted by the federal government under ESEA, which is the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, New Jersey established a different way of looking at progress. They're looking at student growth measures to determine school effectiveness. So it's not just everyone meeting a particular target, but that the students are growing, because we would like, because every student can show some growth, and that's where it's coming from. There are, under this, there are designated priority, focus, and reward schools. Priority schools are those that are not making, it's the bottom 5% of the schools in the state. And that's determined every year. Focus schools are schools where sit subgroups, there's a large gap, achievement gap, between subgroups. And reward schools are the schools that do particularly well. Sayarville does not have any schools in any of those categories, okay, which is a good thing. If schools are in those categories now, there are not sanctions, they actually receive a great deal of assistance to meet those. So it's gone from basically a punishment to a system of trying to help the schools. But for now, Sayarville's not in any of those categories, okay? What happens with this waiver is that all the grades are, it's all aggregated. So for example, when they look at progress targets for SAMSEL, they're looking at fourth and fifth grade scores together, the progress that's made. For the middle school, it's grades six, seven, and eight, put together. And we've received data, but final information's not yet available on our school's designations. We do not believe at this time, we're going to have any priority or focus schools, based on the data that we received, but it's still sequestered, it's not finalized, it will be released to the public soon. Okay, well, here we talk in upcoming slides about DFG, the District Factor Group. This is a way of comparing a school with schools and communities from similar socioeconomic backgrounds. And these are the different points that are used for the state to determine the DFG of a particular school. They range anywhere from A to J. Sayarville is in the DE District Factor Group. So when I show you some of the scores, I will be comparing Sayarville to other schools across the state in the same district factor group, and to state averages. Okay, two other school districts in Middlesex County that are designated DE are Woodbridge and Spotsville, for your efforts. Schools like Milburn, Cranberry, they're at the highest level, the J, and the so-called Abbott districts, like Asbury Park and Newark, would be in the A category. Okay, here we have the scores for the HESPA from March of 2013. You can see in language arts literacy, 93.2% of the total students passed the language arts assessment. The average for the DFG was 92.8, and 91.6 for the state. In math, 82.5% of the students, these are all for first-time, 11th grade students on the HESPA's. 82.5% passed the math assessment, 77.4% for the DFG, and 79.7 state line. The next slide shows the trend, both for Sayarville, the DFG, and the state, over the past five years. It's really hard to look at just one year at a time, but you'll see in some subsequent slides how there are some ups and downs, but I think it's important to look at a five-year trend. So if you see here, Sayarville has, on the five-year trend, we've certainly gone upward all five years in language arts. And we've maintained, except for one year, in 2010, when we were a little bit below the DFG, we were either right at or above the DFG. Okay, and in math, it's again very similar, we've made some very nice gains in math through the years. We've actually increased almost 11 points over the past five years, and this is all for total student population. Okay, some highlights from the HESPA, general education students in language arts, 98.7% of our general education students passed the HESPA in language arts. In math, 90.4% passed. For the African-American subgroup, the math scores increased 18% from 2012. The total student population scores have steadily increased over the past five years in both categories. In grades three through eight, we administer the New Jersey ASPE. Okay, the NJAS eight, the eighth grade results are here. Okay, and 84% of the students in Sayarville passed the exam, 84.2 in the DFG, so right there, we're two tenths of a point below the DFG, and 81.9% state line. In math, 74.6% of the students passed the DFG, it was 68.9, and the state, 69.3%. If you look on the next slide, the NJAS eight, over the past five years, there was a dip in 2011 in Sayarville's scores, but we've made a steady increase over the past two years. And if you look at the math, the math has also increased over the past two years after it had gone down a little bit for several years, but we are about five percentage points above what the DFG state. For NJAS seven, NJAS seven scores across the state with the DFG tend to be lower than NJAS eight, and I know we've discussed that in previous years. Okay, we have 64.9% passed in Sayarville last year, 66% in the DFG, and 65.2% in the state. In language arts, the passing rate is 74%, 64.3% for the DFG, and 63.5% for the state. Okay, if you look here, Sayarville's on the PowerPoint is in blue, we had a decrease in 2010 and 11, and we've been making a steady climb back up over the past three years. And in language arts, again, we made a decrease in 2010, 11, and we've made a significant increase over the past two years. And right now, we're about 10 points above what the state and the DFG in math, in grade seven. In grade six, Sayarville students, 64.7%, the DFG was 67.4, and the state was 66.2. That's in language arts. In math, 78.2 for Sayarville, 81.2 for the DFG, and the state was 78.9. So in both categories, in sixth grade, we were below the state and the DFG. And here's the graph of the past five years for language arts. And we didn't, we had gone up for two years in a row, and then this past year, we did go down a bit. One of the reasons that, especially in language arts, some of the, a number of schools have gone down is because of the integration of the Common Core standards into the NJAS testing. So the test was changed, and this coming year, there will be more significant changes in the math portion for the middle school. Here are the math totals. Again, for a number of years, we made some significant gains in the grade six math, but this past year, we didn't show a decline. NJAS five, here, in language arts, 68.4% passed in Sayarville, the DFG was 61.5, and the state was 61.3. In math, Sayarville was at 85.2, the DFG was 82.4, and the state was 79.9. Okay, here's a graph of the past five years in language arts. Again, you see, as we saw in several of the other grade levels, a drop in 2009, 2010. It was still above in 2011, but there was a nice increase this past year. In grade five math, again, it shows Sayarville, the DFG and the state comparisons. Okay, New Jersey ASPE four, language arts literacy, 64.7% of our students passed, 59.8% in the DFG, and 59.4% in the state. In math, Sayarville scored at 8.2%, the DFG was 8.4, and the state was 78.3. Here's a graph of the fourth grade language arts literacy. If you see here, Sayarville is significantly above the state and the DFG. Here's the fourth grade math totals. And Sayarville's just about at the DFG level and above the state level now, after having, in 2012, there was a drop in the scores. NJAS three, Sayarville, 75% of the students passed the language arts, 67.9% in the DFG, and 66.4% in the state. In math, 90.7% of Sayarville's students passed, the DFG was 8.3, and the state, 77.7. Here's a chart of the third grade language arts scores. Here in third grade, Sayarville has always been above the DFG and the state levels. And in math, also, you can see where Sayarville's up there significantly higher than both the DFG and the state levels at the third grade level. Okay, these numbers are really hard to see, if you go on the website tomorrow, they're a lot easier to read, and certain numbers, small copies, they're going to be difficult to see. But here, I did a quick comparison, this is in language arts literacy, of how the four elementary schools scored. In Arlet, the total of 75.5% of the students passed. Eisenhower, 66.2%, Truman, 81.8%, and Wilson, 79.5%. Okay, this is math. The shaded area is advanced proficient rate, the red area is proficient, and the blue area is partially proficient. Arlet's math was 96.2% total passed, Eisenhower was 84.6, Truman was 89.2, and Wilson was 95.5% passing. Okay, this slide just reviews a couple of the highlights for some of the subgroups. Of course, all the information I provided to you in the charts was based on the total student population. In addition to looking at total students, each of the subgroups are looked at, which is general education, special education, Latino-ish, the different ethnic groups, Hispanic, African-American, Asian, white, they look at female, they look at male, it's broken down economically disadvantaged. It's broken down into all of those subgroups, and put it together, it comes up with a total. Students can be counted in certainly more than one of those subgroups. Grade eight general education scores, 93.6% of the students passed. Grade five African-American scores increased in language arts from, increased by 15.9% from last year. The grade five economically disadvantaged language arts scores increased 13.9%. The grade four Asian student scores increased 14.7% from 2012. Some highlights for the NJAS math scores. Grade eight special education scores increased 11.6% from the previous year. The grade seven total student passing rate was approximately 10% above the DFG and state averages. Grade four special education students in math increased 15.9% from 2012. In general, the general education students of all kindergarten through three schools achieved above 90% proficiency in math. Arlet's school achieved 100% proficiency in three of their subgroups, African-American, Asian, and economically disadvantaged. African American, Asian, and economically disadvantaged. And the grade three total student passing rate is more than ten percent above the DFG and state averages in math. This slide shows a breakdown of the math, of the number, of the percentage of students who were advanced proficient and who were proficient. The passing rates determined by adding together the proficient and the advanced proficient. Of course, our goal is to have as many students as possible score in the advanced proficient range. And in math, we do quite well with that. We have quite a few students who scored in the advanced proficient range. This is the chart showing the same breakdown for the language arts, proficient and advanced proficient. Again, we were not to improve these numbers, and we're always working on that. The numbers in language arts statewide are not nearly as high for advanced proficient as they are in math. Biology competency test. It used to be called the end of course biology test. Now they call it the biology competency test. Every student after taking a first year biology course is required to take this assessment. And whether they take biology as a freshman or a sophomore, they must take this assessment. Okay, the passing rate for Sayerville this past year was fifty-eight point one percent. For the DFG, it was fifty-nine. And for the state, it was fifty-eight point eight percent. Here's a chart showing Sayerville's scores, the state, and the DFG. We only have scores for the state and DFG for two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen because before that time, the state did not provide that information. Okay, the science test in NJAS is given in both grade eight and grade four. And this shows the results. Grade eight, we had eighty-seven point three percent of the students passed in Sayerville. The DFG average was eighty-two point six, and the state average was seventy-nine. In fourth grade, ninety-five point one percent of our students passed. The science portion of the NJAS. The DFG, the score was ninety-two point four, and statewide, eighty-nine point five. Here's a chart showing the grade eight science totals over the past five years. Again, we had a dip in our scores like we did in some of the other subject areas in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve. But we did go back. We went upwards. This past year, both the state and the DFG did go down. Here's grade four, science. You see, Sayerville has always remained above the DFG and the state. And again, this year, Sayerville, the DFG, and the state all declined. And it's hard to discern in cases like that. You have to say, it must be something with the assessment that if everyone across the state and the DFG declined in a similar manner, it's very likely has to do something with the assessment because they do change these assessments from year to year. Last year, in the language arts and math, there were significant changes with more of the new Common Core state standards integrated in everything except for middle school math. This year, they will do middle school math. As a matter of fact, the governor made a press, had a press release today, yesterday or today, talking about how well the state did on average on the new assessments, considering that everything except for grade six through eight math had the new standards as part of it. Okay, SAT scores. These scores are broken, there are three different categories in the SATs, critical reading, math, and writing. Back years ago, it used to be just reading and math. A number of years ago, they added the writing portion to it. The scores for Sayerville are broken down, they're broken down into four-year college-bound students and two-year college-bound students. And then the total students. Well, this year, in two thousand thirteen, Sayerville made some very significant gains in the SATs. For the total students in critical reading, Sayerville students scored four ninety-eight. That's a gain of twenty-nine points from the previous year. In math, Sayerville students went from five hundred one to five hundred thirty-six. In writing, from four hundred seventy-six to five hundred three, which was a gain of twenty-seven points. If you look at the last row, it shows the state scores. And while the state scores did increase, Sayerville's increased at a much faster rate. They were much higher. For example, the state in reading increased eighteen points, while Sayerville increased twenty-nine. The state increased five points in math. Sayerville increased thirty-five. And in the writing, the state increased one point. And we have here just a summary of some of the things I just talked about, some of the highlights from the SATs. Advanced placement courses. Advanced placement courses are courses which are college-level courses that students can take at the high school level. When they take the exam, and if they score three or higher on the exam, most colleges will accept that for college credit. So we strongly encourage the students to partake of that opportunity. Okay, this chart shows the total enrollment of students in the AP courses here at the high school. Now, students who are enrolled in the courses are not required to take the exam. They are encouraged to take the exam, but they are not required to. So this past year, we had three hundred and seventy-seven students enrolled in classes. Two hundred and forty exams were administered. And that's an increase of forty-six exams from the previous year. And the scores of three and above, we had one hundred eighty-nine out of the two hundred and forty students, which was seventy-nine percent who scored three and above. And as an incentive for the students and encouragement to have them take these exams, the Board of Education will reimburse students, the students' parents, for the cost of the exam if a student scores three or above. Okay, this is just a slide that explains some of the highlights about AP. Okay, this past year, we used Apex Learning, which is an online system for some of the AP courses that we were not able to offer here at the high school. Last year, we had twelve students who took the AP Statistics course and two students who took AP Physics course. This year, we actually, we have students, we have a number of students take, we have one student taking AP Physics, two taking AP Stats, ten taking AP Psychology online, one taking AP Microeconomics, and three taking AP Macroeconomics. And this is an opportunity that this, that this school district affords to the children because really, we could not have a class with only three, even ten students. So this is a good opportunity for students to take these courses, and then they could take the exam. And this year, we also added an AP Calculus BC course that is actually taught here at the high school. We have thirteen students enrolled in that. So we are always looking to increase our offerings here. Okay, we certainly have some challenges ahead of us. We are, this will be the last year for the New Jersey ASK assessment. The following year, we will be doing the PARC assessment, which is going to be a totally online assessment. Sayerville will be doing field tests for the state on the PARC assessment in most of our schools. So we'll get firsthand look in the springtime what that's going to look like. So that's going to be a real challenge we're being worried. We also have challenges with the performance of some of our subgroups. Most of the figures I gave you are for total students, but sometimes we do have the subgroups that their performance is not where we would like it to be. Some of the subgroups might be special education, the economically disadvantaged for some of the ethnic subgroups. So that's certainly a challenge to make sure that there is not a large achievement gap between our different groups of students. We have the Common Core state standards, which are providing challenges with realigning the curriculum. And along with that, our own in-district assessments to prepare for the PARC. So, and we have an overall action plan. It's a lot of different things that we were doing, but here, I've just highlighted a few of them. First thing is, we're continuing to enhance instructional materials and technology. The Common Core state standards require a lot of informational text and writing informational pieces. So we are purchasing a lot of materials to go along with those. Technology, you may have heard, we just purchased this year two thousand seven hundred Google Chromebooks to be used in the classroom. Two thousand were from the Sandy grant. We've purchased many iPad throughout the district, so we are working on that. We're increasing the use of formative assessments to help differentiate instruction. We're continuing to provide professional development on best practices, whether we're doing it here in district or we're sending our teachers out. We're integrating PARC-type assessments and activities into the classroom. Some, a number of the midterms are being rewritten to include those types of questions within the assessment. Okay, we're continuing, an ongoing review of the curriculum at all grade levels, especially the grade levels where we noticed in our testing results that we're not really meeting the marks of where we would like to be. Well, is that a curricular issue? We need to look at that. And we're establishing data teams to focus on SGP's, which are student growth profiles, and the cluster scores. Teachers and principals have also had to develop goals, both for the students and for their schools and themselves. So we're really looking at the data. We're pulling it apart, and we're using it to set realistic goals. And some areas of focus, language arts literacy. Looking through the different scores and examining some of the data and cluster scores. We found that in grade eleven, although our grade eleven language arts scores are really very, very good, we still need to do some work on the expository and persuasive writing in the areas of writing and in reading, interpreting text. Those are some areas where even though we had well over ninety percent who passed, those areas could use some more focus. Grade eight, informative and explanatory writing. Grade seven, persuasive writing and informational reading. Grade six, our grade six scores, we're both reading and writing. We're not where we wanted to see them. So we're going to be really focusing on all areas within those two. Grade three, Arlett, narrative writing and narrative reading needs to be a little bit more of a focus. Okay, the action plan. How are we going to go about achieving these goals we're setting? We're going to increase the use of informational texts in both reading and writing. We've expanded Writer's Workshop to the middle school. We have been doing Writer's Workshop for the past two years in the elementary schools. It's now been brought up to the middle school. We're continually sustaining professional development of Writer's Workshop. We have a company that comes in. We have a trainer who comes in and works with our teachers several times during the year by specific grade level. And then, we're also working on more extensive integration of reading and writing across the curriculum. The reading and writing, every teacher has to be a teacher of reading and writing, and we're really working on delivering that message and making sure the curriculum reflects that. Math, we have some areas that we really need to focus on in math. Grade eleven, patterns in algebra. Grade six, patterns in algebra and problem solving. Grade five, numbers and operations in base ten. It was one of the cluster groups that did not meet the mean scores for both the DFG and the state. And grade four, numbers and operations, fractions. So if you have students in any of these grade levels, you may see a little bit more work in these particular areas. Our action plan, how are we going to go about achieving some of those goals? We're going to be working on aligning the middle school math curriculum with Common Core state standards. We're going to conduct an evaluation of the math program, kindergarten through twelfth grade. We're going to train the staff on math workshop and small group instruction. We're very big on doing that in the language arts area, but not, that's not as commonly used in the math area. It's something we need to work on. We're going to continue to use, to train the staff on the use of formative assessments so that they can differentiate the instruction to meet the individual student needs. It's not enough to just say, well, my class needs to learn this. We need to hone in for specific students on the specific areas of weakness. Thank you for listening to this. A lot of numbers and copies of the presentation will be available on the website tomorrow. You'll be able to see the numbers a lot more clearly. So if you have any questions at this point, yeah.
Were all the other schools that played the Writer's Workshop program last year?
Yes, yes, they were.
I have several questions.
Okay.
You're only allowed one.
Well, I'm taking as many as I can.
One question, Tom.
First of all, has our reading series that we implemented several years ago helped improve the test scores that brought up our numbers?
It's hard to attribute it to just one particular factor and to isolate just one factor like that. I think it's a combination of things. I, we're certainly using the reading series, but we're also bringing in additional resources now because of the increased emphasis on the informational text. Writer's Workshop is something new that was never, that is not part of the series. The series is still, the reading series is still serving as the backbone of our language arts program in grades K through six, but we are adding to it. Hard to say if it's just the reading series that's helped.
Number two, why is there such a difference in overall performance between our four elementary schools with Arlett and Wilson higher than both Truman and Eisenhower? Why is that?
That's something that we are looking into. And we really don't have the answers at this point. In this year, they were a little bit further apart than they have been in the past. I didn't have all that information up there about how they performed in the past. But we're looking at every possibility. These numbers here too are, these are the numbers that include all the students. It does not include the students who are, for example, in the district for less than a year. It does include those students. Whereas when the state looks at whether or not you're making progress, the state pulls those students out of the factor. Because let's say if a student comes in in January, you're testing them in April, it's really difficult to assign that student's performance to that particular school. So what we're doing right now is we're taking, we're pulling apart, and the principals are, pulling apart all that data to see if we can pinpoint any particular areas that we need to work on or reasons why.
Okay, my last question, I might keep waiting for Christmas. When are we going to? When are we going to find out and finally put into working order the technology that Unite-Ar-Emress gave us, $796,000? When are we going to buy the Chrome, 2,000 Chrome tablets and have them in the district?
They are in the process of being, they are being unloaded. I think most of them have been already brought into the district. We just met again today to distribute them evenly among the schools.
Not the 700 I'm talking about. This is the additional.
Yes, yes. It's a total of 2,700 Chromebooks, 2,000 of which were purchased with the funds from the Sandy grant, 700 with lower budget money. And those should be, they should be in the schools.
They were arriving, they were arriving about 300 to 400, 300 to 400 Chromebooks at a time, so they're not all being delivered at the same time.
But they will be all in for the calendar year 13, 14, am I correct?
Yes, 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 they will definitely be in. We just met, we have to make sure that they all have to be set up once they get to the schools and so on. Sandy, Middy and I met today to talk about it, and they're being rolled out pretty much as soon as possible.
Thank you, I only had three.
Okay.
Appreciate that. One question, one question.
I have a few. Curious about cut scores. Do we know how close our students are to the advanced proficient and to how close the partially proficient are to being proficient?
You mean?
When we look at the cut scores for students, do we know how close we are to the next level?
We know by the individual student.
Not as a group.
Not, not as a group, no, no. But we can look at that and we can pull that information out and we can see how close they are. Let's say we can see, we could pull it out because we have, we have the information, we get the information in many different forms, and one form is Excel. So we can play around with those Excel worksheets and just pull out all the students, let's say partially proficient, and then rank, we rank them.
And then can we target those students specifically? And like as our, as our AIS students and to push them up to, and those are the kids that, those borderline kids that are close to that cut score?
Yes.
The ones we can reach?
Right, and that's exactly what we do. That's how the students are targeted.
As a follow-up to that, do we have the, are we getting item analysis on those tests as well? So wait, we've got a yes, we've got a no.
If we don't get item analysis, all we get are cluster scores. And all it does is by grade level, it will say.
Fractions.
It'll say fractions and then by the total students, and it just goes into general education, special education.
So we can't tell what kind of question it is?
No, 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 we have no idea. That's one of the downfalls of this testing is it's very hard to pinpoint what it is.
Well, it says like, for example, data analysis, probability and discrete mathematics, and it breaks it down into general, special ed, limited English.
Yeah, but that's general, like it's not specific enough for a substitute's teacher.
And that's not what the state gives.
Unfortunately, much like when we used to, years ago, when we did the Terranova, we would get an item analysis and you'd have the teacher's entire class and next to it, they would have the student's names going across. It would show you whether or not they got each question right or wrong, and it would even show you if it was wrong, which answer they chose that made it incorrect. So you could see not only by individual student, but you could see by the class, well, 80% of the class got this question wrong, you know, so you would, as a teacher, you could go back and you could look at that. We don't get anything like that with this. I mean, we get, okay, your, your general education, grade 5, did not do well on data analysis.
I think what they're maybe doing, in answer to your question, I think what they may be doing in answer to your question is that once everything becomes electronic, which is next year, you're going to get a lot more item analysis. Right now, it's still pen to paper and they're, and they're doing it that way. Once the kids go electronic, which will be when the park is administered in 2015, probably get a lot more data, just like we're getting now, in tons of data. So I'm assuming that will be a lot better.
So we have formative, we're talking about formative assessments, are they going to be standardized throughout the district? So like back to what Ms. Bishada was saying with the, with the different elementary schools, we can pinpoint and target, they're going to be district-wide?
Yes.
Formative?
Yes, they will.
Not by teacher?
Correct, correct. And that's what we're looking to do. We're actually looking into a company called Linkit, which is something, it's about $9 a student, and they not only take the data from their test scores like the NJAS, but also they have a whole bank of questions. It's electronic and it's a very easy way to design formative assessments, especially district-wide, get the data, and will give our students great practice for the park assessment. So actually, we're looking at doing that. I've spoken to Ms. Jakubic and Ms. Moore about it, and we're actually going to, I attended a webinar, Sammy Paul and I attended a webinar on it, and Ms. Jakubic, Ms. Moore and I are going to a presentation in about two weeks on it. And I am very much in favor of going with something like that. I think it will provide us with, it'll be a great resource and it will really help us design formative assessments that will be standardized and without, it'll give us a lot of good data, which is what we're honestly missing at this point.
I have one more. Actually, I have a few more, but I've cut it down to one. SAT scores, they don't, you can't follow those on the district factor group. Like you can't look at them that way, break them out at all. It's just state.
Right, because the state is the one who breaks out things by district factor group. It's the college board and ETS who does the SATs. So we add state. You can also get global numbers, but I didn't think those were that significant. I thought it was more important for just the state and our own local scores. I think we did, I think they did a great job on the SATs this past year.
Thank you.
One question in seven parts, is that okay? First of all, just a couple of comments. Mrs. Ziegler, I think the presentation's outstanding. You know, I've struggled over the last couple of years to really get a good handle on how we're performing, and I think this gives us not only a good current state, but gives us the historical piece that we need to know if we're gaining or losing ground. You know, when you look at our math scores, I think that the math team here has done a phenomenal job. You know, we're significantly above the district factor group in just about every single area. Same thing in science, and we've got a long history of that. I wouldn't necessarily say English has a, is a challenge as much as it is, I think, an opportunity for us to go beyond the district factor group and see if we can move those scores a little higher. The other piece of, when you look at the results, the results from SAMPSOL, you know, by the time those students are leaving the fifth grade, both in English and mathematics, there's a, there's a gap, you know, a positive gap in terms of between where they are and the district factor group. So really, you know, so some great applause and commendations to our teachers and our administrators for these results.
Okay. Oh, I'm not done. That was part one. In terms of, I guess, a question, I have two questions. One, and this, you might not have an answer to it at this point, but I think part of it lies in Mrs. Rakuya's question about the cut score. You know, is there an opportunity in the upcoming budget? Maybe we want to look at some type of program that the board can allocate funds to, to specifically look at some type of inflection point in these results where if we launch a new program and make a sustained investment, that we can have a sustained, sustained academic growth at whatever that inflection point is all the way through high school. And I'm sure you don't have an answer to that now as you're just going through these results, but it's something we might want to look at for budget time. My second question is actually, I think, more to the board. It's interesting that you look at these results and they're very good. And then when you look at the high school and you look at, for example, some of the surveys that are done like by New Jersey Monthly, you know, we don't rank as high as some other high schools in the state. And I would never expect us to rank as high as the wealthier schools, but I don't think our ranking is anywhere as near where these results say it should be. And I know as I talk to people, there is some, I guess, ambiguity about how well our high school's performing, you know, if our student goes to high school, you know, can he get into a, can he or she get into a, you know, a good college? What are board members hearing about, like, you know, the college piece in terms of how well our students are doing in terms of getting into the college of their choice? Is that an issue? Has the curriculum committee looked at that at all? Have they received any feedback from parents?
Well, I mean, I think guidance would be the best place to record that data. I don't know, I don't collect that data. I mean, that's a good point, it's always been something that the curriculum committee brought, and that's why we've added more AP courses, we've looked at the Apex online things to make, or competitive. I think what Mrs. Syak is talking about, and he'll correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, we compete with other school districts that spend a lot more money on education. That's where that district factor group came in, and I think this is, as I can mention at the beginning of the briefing. What a district factor group really is, it's a community's ability to pay, and it's based on two things when they rank a community. One is, what is the average income of the residents? The other one is, what is the average property value within the town? And that's based on what taxes go to the school district. And we've continually been, at least since the last eight years I've been on the board and been following, we have, you know, one of the second lowest in the state on what we pay for education. But if you look at our scores, we're very competitive with those schools around us that are higher district factor groups, like Old Ridge and East Bronx, we're like to compare us to. You know, this is a lot of data we gave you, and I looked at this last night, I looked at it the night before. What does this mean to you out in the public is that, you know, we're doing a pretty good job here, based on what we're paying and the statistics are here. When you look at district factor groups, A is the poorest and J is the richest, and we're D. And our scores are very good, especially in a high school. When the curriculum committee got the briefing about two months ago on the AP scores, we're doing very well on the AP scores, and now I see the SAT scores a bit too. And that's really what counts, all these other, you know, we're seeing gains in other elementary schools and too, but when you get to high school, that's really, you know, the HESKEL scores and the SAT scores and determining where you're going to go for college, how much money you're going to get to go there. And those are the things that we're always concerned about, you know, bringing on the technology and all these other things that we're doing, but we're moving in that direction, and I think this is what shows us. And as Mr. Syak said, you know, all these test scores.
Two things, it was brought up in candidates, I, by myself and Mrs. Blum, that Servo is, why people, Servo is rated number one in the state is because of public schools. That was the whole thing. Our school system is outstanding. That's number one there. I forgot what the second word is.
Good. But no, I've asked him, our technology person that you mentioned this, this is the site that ranked Saville number one. It's nerdwallet.com. And what it is, and a lot of people haven't heard of it, a lot of people dismiss it, but if you get on the website, take a look at it. They're an advocacy site if you want, you know, rank credit card companies, mortgage companies, anything in finance, places to live. And Saville, and I got an email from the mayor, and he said, you know, take a look at this. And one of the things, if you get on the website, they took it down as far as, because that was, I think, a couple of weeks ago, we didn't have a meeting on the fifth, we would have talked about it then, but if you looked at it, one of the major things they looked at when they ranked the towns is school district. Looking at the performance of the school district, how much taxes are paid for the school district, and a few other things that I don't recall, they looked at the schools. But that was the number one thing they looked at, and they ranked it for middle-class people. When you looked at the Money Magazine, which I get, a couple of years ago, they ranked the top 100 places in the country to live, and schools are part of it, but I don't think anybody in this room would be able to live in some of these places that are ranked one to the country. But when you look at the state of New Jersey, you know, Saville was ranked number one, and part of that was not only the average income, taxes and unemployment and all other things they looked at, and school district was one of them, that kind of ties into, so it kind of makes sense when you take a look at this. And that's the site, so a lot of people dismiss it, they said, "I've heard," I'd never heard of it before, and I said, "Very well, what's that?" And I went on the site and took a look at it, there's a lot of good information on there. If you want to look at, you know, no interest credit cards, mortgages, but if somebody started out with a family, they say, "Hey, where do we want to live? This is our income." And they got a little calculator, "This is our income, this is how much we can allocate to this debt." You know, Saville ranks pretty high in that area, and that's what that was, so thank you.
I can remember number two now. Mrs. Sekola actually sends out a report every so often about two, four-year colleges, how many students, military.
Right.
And I think that's leading up to what Mr. Syak was asking about, is showing what our students are going to do upon graduation, which is a positive thing for the school and for the district.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I think that's good information, and then the next board committee meeting will, definitely, I think that was the thing to talk about, was having the guidance, head of guidance to provide that information to us, so we could tie all this stuff together. The technology's a big piece of it. And the technology committee has been, that's one good thing about the curriculum committee, we have a technology person, we have a curriculum person, we have a finance person, so we're putting all that together, and this, you know, Rakuya, you know, has really been pushing the technology, and I think, you know, that helps, I think everything helps that we do, so. And you make those graphs with them?
Yes, I learned that.
Thank you.
That power point, 30 seconds, it was working well, that's right.
It's all I graduated school, I've gone to.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we're going to press on with you, Tim.
Any other questions?
I know that our, I'm trying to think, our per student expenditure, how does that play for a district factor group?
It's not, it's not so much the per pupil expenditure that goes into the district factor group. What goes into it is, it has to do with the community characteristics and the.
No, no, I know that, but.
But it's, that's not part of the district factor group determination.
Oh, but I know that they, our per student spending.
Right, yes, that's based on, when they do that, it's part of the comparative spending guide, which is available on the Department of Ed website. And they break schools down by the number of students, districts, and.
You could, for example, Asbury Park is probably.
Michael Home.
I'm sorry, Asbury Park.
Sorry, Asbury Park is like an A, very avid district, and they spend $22,000 a kid, okay? And so that doesn't necessarily mean they correlate one another. So it doesn't necessarily mean, so the DFG is just socioeconomic status of the town itself, like Mr. McEnroe was saying.
Because I know, like, I know I've heard in the past two, six years, that Sentinel has been hurting, not that they're, we're thrilled that we've got this, but they banged them up.
Right, right, we, we're, right, but if you look at comparative spending guide, it varies a little bit from year to year where Saville ranks, because of course that changes from year to year. But in districts our size, we are always among the lowest spending in the state, whether it's number two or number three or four, we're right in that range there every year.
How much unadequacy are we based on what the state says we should be spending? No, as far as per student?
Per student, about 2,600.
No, there was, no, there was almost 3,000. So if you had 3,000 more times 6,000, we're over 6,000 students now, you have 18 million dollars more than you would have when you required to spend. And that's what you have to understand, and what we can do with 18 more million dollars, you know, more teachers, more class size, and those types of things. But the district factor group, they don't take that into consideration, and that certainly is a byproduct of the results.
I think we do very, very well in Saville. We really do. We do well no matter how you look at it, but when you take into consideration our spending per pupil, it makes our results look even that much better.
Okay, thank you. If you have any other questions, we will open up the public at the end, if you think of something you want to ask, we will open up again for anything. Pressing on with the agenda, correspondents, everybody who received a monthly technology, monthly maintenance order reports, if you have any questions, you missed the answer. Provable minutes, everybody should have seen the regular executive session meetings of both the October 1st and October 15th meeting. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, additions?
You have to make a motion in the second first.
What?
I'll make a motion in the minutes we approved.
Right, okay, I didn't get there.
I have a.
Okay.
I have a second.
Well, that's why you didn't make a motion yet, because I have a change.
Now I can open my phone?
Yes.
I've never heard of that one before.
That's what confused me.
October 1st, 17 committee reports. I didn't have a committee report, and it had, so I think the easiest thing to do, my concern was with the policy committee not having a policy on 130 credits, but it is discussed under policy, so the easiest thing is to just strike it, I would think.
Just strike it, the board is fine with that, we'll just strike all the comments.
Yes, and they have any objection to that? No? Okay, so you have a motion in the second, take a roll, all except in five minutes.
Mr. Bauckett?
Yes.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Robinski?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
I'm going to abstain on the October 1st meeting and yes, on the October 15th.
And Mr. McEnroe?
Yes. We have the student council representative tonight, we do have a parent-involved representative, Mr. Tom Fritz, and sorry to keep you, we're hitting the law, just want to come on up and... He just wanted to come on up and give his presentation.
We have the laptop, so that's impressive.
Took a lot of notes this morning. Good evening. We had a Saville parent involvement meeting, yes, last night at 7:00 PM. We had a presentation from the Saville Domestic Violence Response Team. Basically, they just went over the presentation on how they work with the police, they're on call, they're seeking volunteers, of course, and they talked about domestic violence and how it can happen to anybody, doesn't matter race, or if you're poor, or rich, or whatever, it happens and all. And basically, they just give overall a bunch of different, and they gave us a lot of sobering statistics about teens and tweens being in also domestic violence, like, relationships as kids. So, there's some staggering stuff that they went through on there. We also had questions. It seems to be the most important thing that keeps coming up in all of these meetings is next year's new curriculum, or the PAC, or PARK. It seems to have come up in the past three meetings that we have had. There seems to be concerns from the parents about, you know, how it's just going to affect the children, the teachings, and all that kind of stuff. Somebody did ask too, if they have an ROTC program. The principal of the high school was there, and he mentioned that they have applied for an ROTC program. They're hoping, they're on the waiting list for the Air Force, apparently. So, hopefully that'll come through soon. One of the other concerns is the teachers' evaluations. The new Danielson evaluation system is going to be used next year. That seemed to be an ultimate issue.
I choose now.
Oh, choose now, I'm sorry. Choose now. So, there seem to be some questions about that. We're going to have another meeting on January 13th with the possibility of a meeting in December to discuss, didn't write that one down.
Parent full, parent full.
Yeah, parent full. And that's basically all we have.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate your involvement, and I, that's the first time I've seen the laptop. It falls right into our technology. Excellent. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks. District highlights, Mr. Syak, I know you've been waiting. Special congratulations go out to Mr. Peter Alvarez and the Saville Memorial High School Architecture and Robotics classes for going above and beyond the call of duty by helping out the community. At the end of the past school year, the students were asked by the Public Library to help work out, work on a space planning project. The students measured out the library and produced an AccuDrawn blueprint and an AutoCAD version of the floor plan, along with a three-page document created by the students in addressing some spatial issues within the building. Susan Kaplan, the library director and the library's board of trustees, accepted the plan and are creating spaces within the library to accommodate students and other patrons after school. This is what the Saville School District is all about. On October 30th, the Saville Memorial High School Choir and choir and choral parents and Fedora Productions hosted Acoustic Night 2013 Songs for a Cure. This is actually the second annual event that they've done. This benefit concert with an unplugged theme featured music from all genres. SWMHS students were featured performers using instruments ranging from hand percussion, piano, guitar, and sitar. All of the proceeds from the event were donated to the Lust Garden Foundation, which works towards funding research to battle pancreatic cancer. Congratulations to Mr. James Kraft and the choir for his marvelous performance and their generosity to the Lust Garden Foundation. Our Saville sons and daughters have emerged victorious from their trip to the Tournament of Bands Greater New York Area Championship competition. Winning is great, and this year it is a fitting reward for all of the long hours and concentrated effort the students have invested in becoming a high-caliber marching band. Congratulations to the members of the Saville Memorial High School Marching Band on a memorable season. On October 20th, they received a first-place finish at this tournament. Their score of 91.55 was the highest score for the 3A caption and included awards for Best Music, Visual, and Color Guard. This season, the band was undefeated in all six Tournament of Bands competitions they attended. In addition to the band's success in the 3A competition, their scores at the Madawan Regional High School were the highest among all 11 bands in the A Division. At the West Essex High School Championship, the Bomber Band's score was the highest of all 14 bands in the A Division as well. We are so proud of these students, advisors, and parents for all their hard work and dedication throughout the school year. It's also my understanding that this is the equivalent of a state championship. Mr. President, I was wondering if we can invite them to a future meeting as we do all of our other stadiums? They have been invited. I think they're on the next meeting. They're going to be doing that, and I spoke with the band director, Mr. Crusoe, at the football game on Friday. And for those of you that, you know, this is remarkable, the band over the years that we watch them, you can see the difference, even the most casual observer, of the size, the performance of the band, not only the choreography, but the music as well. At the football games, the band keeps getting bigger, and the quality of the sound, and, you know, anybody playing instrument, they try to play an instrument and march at the same time. That's quite confusing. And it's really noticeable difference, and I started noticing, I said, you know, this is really, you know, different. And another thing that impresses me, the parents, how much work it is to set up the band and take it down and all that kind of stuff. So, it's a big logistical thing, and it's something else that, you know, we can be proud of. I know we always talk about sports teams, but, you know, there are other things that sometimes we overlook, you know, we saw our choir, we have this band that's winning all these tournaments, and it's something else for us to be proud of, and we will be having them come to the meeting, and maybe they can do a little performance or something while they're here, you know, that'd be nice as well, so. So, let's see if they can do that. Live up the place a little bit. Some people like that falling asleep. Very good. All right. So, Dr. Fontana, you very quickly...
I'll wait everybody.
Get us to your report.
I will. I ask that, please hold the questions to the end of the report. This way I can get through. I doubt not. First section, section A, Buildings and Grounds, there's a change where it says Saville Upper Elementary School, it's the gymnasium on Friday, February 7th. The rest of the report, the rest of the resolution is correct, so please make sure you make a note of that, and that's the use of the facility for the gymnastics program. Moving to section B, Finance, our regular resolutions, 1 through 12A, as noted on page 3. Page 4 is our non-public resolution for monies that we receive for these additionals for these schools, which is Our Ladies of Victories, St. Stans, and Agobbi Land Childcare. And these organizations, these schools apply for these funds, and this come out of the federal government. 14 is a disposal of equipment. 15 is the raising of the substitute nurses from $150 to $200. Reason being is it's very difficult to get substitute nurses. 16 is a revision to some of our Class 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 substitute rates. And 17 is also an increase, a mild increase, mostly a quarter in most of those substitute areas, as noted. Number 18 is the online payment of school lunches. This is so that we can go out and bid this service. It's not that we're approving any service tonight, but we need to solicit quotations of Mr. DeAndrea. If this is approval, go out and do that. On page 8, number 19, it's a change order for Gibson for the middle school heating system, as noted. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan is also being approved tonight. And Epic Health Services is a nursing service that we are asking for approval tonight as one of our consulting firms. Number 22 is the appointment of our auditors, which is Samuel Klein and Company. 23 is the approval of some retroactive presenters on the Staff Development Day, and by the way, that was an excellent staff development. I just want to congratulate all the presenters, which were a lot of them were teachers, because Zeigner was really the one who spearheaded it, and the Staff Development Committee. So, I really want to thank everyone, and it was really a productive day, and that was on election day. Moving along, approval of an annual support and maintenance contract, as noted, and the memorandum of agreement was, as Mr. Mackinon said, between the Saville Education Association and the Board of Education was approved, or will be approved tonight, and hopefully ratified in the near future.
I just want to say that I want to thank the committee, Mrs. Trapp, and Mrs. Rukuyan, myself. We reached an agreement with the Saville Education Association at 11:00 PM a week ago today. I am not going to give the specifics, give the association the opportunity to brief their personnel and ratify it. We will, once that's done, provide the specifics to the public on what the agreement is. So, I want to thank again the committee for their time. I think we reached an agreement that was very fair.
I would like to thank the committee as well, and the SEA, I thought it was a very productive reporting experience, and hopefully both sides, so. Thank you. Moving along to C, Personnel, Certified, there's a few resignations as listed, retirement, unpaid medical leave, an extension of an unpaid medical leave, some retroactive salary changes due to Black Seal, another transfer of a custodian to a different location, and some professional days, as well as full-time power professionals working some additional hours for some of our youth that need specific attention at different functions. And number 10 is our substitute non-certificated list. Moving to D, there's a few resignations, as noted, an appointment of an individual, a wrestling coach, as noted, number 3, on page 12, unpaid medical leave, a childer, some pregnancy leaves, as noted, and an extension of an unpaid medical leave, and a lateral transfer of a teacher that Mr. Brown discussed before, and retroactive temporary lateral transfer of a teacher, and some, an appointment of a freshman advisor at the high school. And resetting of a few coaches that are listed on page 13, approval of personnel coaches also, in the various areas as noted, as well as unpaid coaches aides to assist the coaches in the winter sports. Retroactively approval of some PSAT advisors and helpers. The request to approve a teacher, an advisor of the Support Troops Club, true retroactively our nurse for a particular program that she runs. This was a retroactive approval. Some professional days, which are noted on pages 14, 15, 16, and 17, about eight or nine employment that we've made over the last month, some substitutes, and I have one additional resolution for this section, D. The Board of Education, this will be number 21, is requested to approve the termination of Jacque Melo, English teacher at the Saville Memorial High School, effective immediately. Moving to section E, as soon as I get there, Policy, Graduation Requirements, this is the second reading, and hopefully will be approved. The second is transitioning the annual school board election to the November general election. This, basically, this resolution, the Board of Education believes that moving to the filing deadline closer to the election would encourage more candidates in these nonpartisan elections. Moving to section F, it's our H, number 5 through 10 approval, recommendation of a board disciplinary committee, recommendation, nursing services plan, as noted, so special services placements and services, as noted in number 4 on pages 20 and 21. Moving to section G, Co-Curriculum, changing the date of the winter concert at the middle school to the 7/3. High school cheerleaders will be attending a national competition in Ocean City, Maryland. French Honor Society will be going on a field trip. The high school marching band will be playing in the parade on the 7/8. The school TV production club will sponsor a blood drive on November 6th, or, I'm sorry, retroactively they did it. The soccer players are going to their awards banquet. Truman PTO is doing a Bang Bingo Day designer, I'm not sure what that is. PTO and Truman is going to Valentine's Day dance. Truman is also having a family movie night, and Kids Bingo. Approve the reformation of the Christian club at the high school. Olive School is doing their family math and reading night on November 21st. Olive is also doing a beautification day on Saturday, November 23rd. Moving to Support Services, waiver of transportation is noted. Use of board buses, once again, as noted, for a particular group on those days listed. Number 3, there are 17 field trips, so noted, on pages 23, 24, and 25. I also would like to congratulate Mrs. Bloom, who's sitting in the audience, who will be sitting up here in approximately a month and a half before we have won the board election. I want to congratulate her. And I also would like to thank Helen and Tom for their services, and I appreciate it. Thank you, how so, and then, I appreciate everyone, and congratulate everybody as far as their board seats and their...
Any board questions on the agenda for opening up the public? Seeing none, oh, Mrs. Bakker, I'm sorry.
Page 2, Buildings and Grounds, it says, do we charge for the building's support? Do that one?
I'm sorry, is there anything else?
Number 1, Buildings and Grounds.
Do we charge for that? I don't believe you are.
Of the building.
I think we're, I don't, I don't. I think we're just doing a custodial process.
Just custodial.
Yeah.
Mr. Vashada? I'm sorry, Mr. Bakker?
Oh, I don't have a system now.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, get Mr. Bakker, like, just go, you do your...
Do you have a question on the same thing?
No, I don't.
Oh, sorry. Number 16 and 17, page 6. On number 17, at the last meeting, we had approved these rates, and I remember asking if we compared them to other towns, and you had said that we were okay with our rates.
Yeah, some of the rates are higher, some of the rates are lower. We're kind of in the middle, we're at the median, and we have not increased these rates, the ones on number 17, in probably seven or eight years.
Okay, but I guess what occurred between the last meeting and this meeting that we made the change? Like, did we do more research, or...
No, we just asked that we were going to put it on, and we felt that there was a discussion on whether or not we should put these on, if, you know, I, you know, I just felt that it was time to give these individuals a slight raise. I think it's like a quarter, or 50 cents.
And on number 16, are all of those rates going up?
No, no, just, I believe, Class 2 went from 90 to 95. Class 1, I believe, was 80 to 85, and the principals went from 230 to 240, I believe.
Number 18, on page 7. Mr. DeAndrea, you had sent down an email a while back, and I just want to make sure this is the same system. This was the system, and this was where you were requesting that the board general fund pay for it over the cafeteria? Is this the system?
No, this is, this isn't going to be paid for, and I have to apologize. What occurred was, I did not find until, find out until after I spoke with our attorneys, that although there are no funds being expended by the board, still has to go out for public advertisement to accept it as a concession. So, there was an email that went out looking for NutriKids. They are still in the, they still have their proposal, but I now have to advertise to see if anybody else wishes to also provide the services. My recommendation to the board at that time, and I would prefer to talk about it when we approve it, but, is to, for the first six months, is the board take up the cost so we can get people involved, so we can spread the word at that point. But this, right now, only authorizes me to go out and solicit proposals from other groups.
And is this the system where the parents have to pay?
Yes, the parents can go online now, make payments for the cafeteria service, and hopefully expand to other types of services that we provide.
Like you did every year for college?
In college?
Yeah, we call up, you put one in, you know?
Page 14, I think it went so fast, there's a, number 17. Did you say this was a nurse?
Yes, it was a nurse.
Okay. And do you know what the cost is? Is this a current nurse? Or is this a nurse that's currently in the district?
Yes.
She's not running the program, though. It's run by the PTO program.
She's assisting a medically fragile child.
Okay, so, but there's a cost, I assume, the PTO pays for... Okay, so, but there's a cost, I assume the PTO pays for it?
The PTO, the nurse?
No.
No, we pay for this.
The board pays for it?
Yes.
And do you know what the cost is?
I think it's 50, I think it's for $53 an hour.
It's an hour and a half.
I believe, I believe that's what it is. That's what we usually...I can check it.
And then I just have one other question. Page 23, number two, I'm going to re-vote now.
I apologize, please.
Page 23.
Support services, H.
Page 23.
Number two.
Number two, number nine.
That's retroactive theory. Now that we've got the insurance requirement in place, what is the concern? Mr. Backer for society, answer the question. We've now got the insurance requirement in place. If they name us as insured, what's the concern?
My concern has always been the treatment of the property.
Treatment of?
Yes, like if you go by there, the way it's organized, everybody parks all over the place, they park on the lawn. I've always said there's no, no one monitoring there.
Any other questions? Figure out how to address that policy. Mr. Bishada.
Actually, it's free. I'm going to staple my screen for tonight. Page 13, page 13, number 15. These proctors and all this, are all these people employed, are they teachers or employed by the district that do the proctoring?
Um, yeah, he's a certified teacher. I don't believe all, I'm not sure of all.
The reason I ask is because there's a call. I believe it's Dr. Cola's husband or...
Yeah.
You know, I thought that we give our, I give our employees a chance to do this before we bring outsiders in.
I believe he's done this before.
I think we should give consideration to our staff before we bring outsiders in, that's my opinion. All right, let me move on. Page 23, number two under support services. I will be voting no on number two. And my reason, Mr. Syak, is I feel that this is a private organization, maybe should be using their own buses. They've done it before, we've allowed them to use it. I think we should go back and let them use their own equip, pay to use their, or pay them, let them pay to have somebody else's buses transport their members to and from them. That's my opinion, so I'll be voting no. And my final one is, I got two meetings to go, Mr. DeAndrea. When are we going to have a final Verizon bill done with? This is two years.
Still haven't received it from them, Mr. Bishada. We're back and forth and as long as they're not requesting any further payment for me, I'm not really looking to pay them because they're not asking for anything. So as far as I'm concerned, it's closed, it's closed at this point in time. I have not had any correspondence.
Have you notified them that it's going to be closed then? If they haven't notified us because you...
Yeah, well, that's my last correspondence to them was did you write final payments and they've not responded back.
I know, because this can drag on for 20 years, you know, I...
They haven't submitted. We don't want to ask them for a bill, do we?
No, that's what I'm saying. I told them we've made all our payments and they've not come back.
It's like the law pilots going to be festering. That's going to be the problem here.
We don't pay.
That was my thread.
I have a question. Under finance, number 19, what was the change order for?
When you go into the room that we've changed the unit later, there was, I guess the best way, I'll explain it, is you can hear the sound of water running through the radiators. So they had to figure out a mechanism to reduce the sound in the classroom.
Teachers were complaining that it was disrupting class. You could hear kids breathing and it was little, it was loud.
One of the buses that we're hiring is a coach bus?
Yeah, I can answer that question, it came up. There's about 53 or 54 children going. We would have to take two of our own buses. They took one coach bus plus this is a longer trip. So Ms. Shetlock just feels that it's better to take the coach bus rather than to take a, one of our school buses. It's just more economical and it's more efficient in the long run.
And that's it.
Any other board question, Mr. Balki?
P number eight abstaining, P number 16 abstaining. G number one, I just have a comment this, what page is it? That's page 21. That's not, the concert is going for our next meeting, I guess. What's the concern?
I spoke to, thanks for bringing it up, Dan, because I forgot. Donna said there's no other date to put that. And I told her, I said, Donna, that's a board date. She said, Frank cannot move it, that's the only date I can use it. So she said...
I think they stage some people in here too going to concerts, so it's going to be...
We'll have to make it, we'll make it quick then. We'll have the board meeting earlier if you want.
Say we go to the concert.
Why don't we do the board meeting a little earlier? That's if we wanted to vote.
Send us this by email and go to the concert.
I'm fine.
What's the date?
December 3rd.
December 3rd, if you want, we can start the meeting a little earlier and go to the concert. That's up to the board.
Concert starts at 7:00, we go to 7:00.
The concert, the concert usually, yeah, starts at 7:00.
We keep our executive session short, but we just canceled. There you go.
4/3?
Yeah, go to the concert.
Just cancel the meeting?
No, the executive, we just have a public meeting. We'll talk.
All right.
Thanks for pointing that out, Dan.
H number two, page 23, I also don't know. I just know, like, I've been on record trips with my daughters and stuff and we rent the buses from outside companies. We use board head buses, so why shouldn't other organizations have the same thing?
Well, I look at it this way, I think this is overtime for our employees. You know, we charge them to pay overtime for our employees plus we're making money on the bus for miles. And we're not going long distance.
Are we making money or just charging fuel price very much?
We got a bunch, I shouldn't say that. We charge it appropriately now. Plus we overtime on our employees.
Plus, any other issue that you have too with this? And I understand Mrs. Backer's, you know, concerned about the petition of the middle school. But the other issue that you have is I believe that we loan our buses out for a fee to the Brain Injured Children's Association. So you can't, you can't loan to one and not loan to another.
We're not loaning, we're charging.
Or charging. You can't, well, you can't lease or rent or whatever to one without doing it, treating everybody, you know, equally.
I'd like to see if a company can outside company charge for the use of a bus on the same day and charge the same amount. This way we're on the same, you know, we're undercharging drastic.
You charge whoever we want to charge.
Yeah, as long as we're consistent, we're, no matter what the group is, we...
It's pretty equal, so the same amount.
You know, parking problem to me, you know, it's always been a concern is that, you know, it's an enforcement issue. You know, you got an auxiliary police, put them over there and say, help me park on the grass, if you'll say. And they do that for the Quick Check parking lot, the Coast Guard's parking lot, nights at Columbus, you don't park here. You know, when the lot's full, you close it off and say, you know, you got Bailey's Park, you got the Johnson Park, you have Burke's Park. You got, you know, it's a lot of places, enforcement issue.
And there were nights that we did not allow them to park on our property and they were okay with that.
Mr. Backer? Over here.
Oh. I heard that in general.
It wasn't about... On number 17, I'll be abstaining.
Which page?
Um, page six, number 17. I'm abstaining. And on 23, I even number two, I'll be voting no also. Just to ad lib a little with Mr. Backer, I'm sorry, with Mr. Balki said. Would we be open to charging them for parking? I know the Knights of Columbus had a Friday or Saturday where they charged so much per corner.
The F W makes a lot of money.
Absolutely, I rode by there Friday, played a football game two weeks ago and they did.
Yeah, I had something to think about.
Hire somebody to do...
Yeah, I can't charge it. And although since it's public property, that might be a problem, you know. Same thing with Our Lady of Victories Church, which is borough property. St. Stans across from St. Stans, it's a borough parking lot also.
Is the board head property, not borough property?
Yes.
It's private, it's public property. It's still a bit of a public...
Board of Ed property.
Well, it's expat, it's a public building. Call Jonathan and find out.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, let's, let's, ask that question, that's a good... I can answer all of them.
One last comment, just for the board's information. On the resolution that's there to move the petition filing date to the end of July, that passed the Senate today, yesterday by a vote of 38 to 0 with two people not voting, so it now goes to the assembly.
What does that mean?
Right now, the petition filing deadline for the districts which have November elections is the date of the primary, which is the first Tuesday in June. This will now move it to, I believe it's the last Monday in July. So it will basically compress the time period between when petitions are filed and when the November election is held.
And has that encouraged more people to do it?
Well, it brings it closer to the date in which the election is held as opposed to having a filing date that's several months in advance.
Kevin, was the only choice to move it to July or not to move it to July? Or was there date choices?
The original date was, I think, early September because what NJSPA was striving for was the same time period that currently exists with the April election, which is like 45 days. However, and that's the way the bill was originally written. But then when it started going through committee, I guess the county election board started having an issue with it because that creates issues for them with all that's going on in November with having that date so close to the election. So they reached a compromise which is using the July date that's stipulated in the resolution.
Okay, so now that it passed, it's done?
Well, it's passed the assembly, I'm sorry, passed the Senate. It's now going to the assembly and then it goes to the government.
So were we late on voting?
A little. I, I didn't, when I put the resolution forward, I didn't know the assembly was going to vote on it, so. They moved quicker than anticipated.
And when is the Senate voting, do you know?
I'm sorry, the Senate already voted. The assembly, I don't know when they're voting.
How would they care if it passed this?
I have a feeling it's going to pass. Everything I've heard recently is that it's going to pass in the lame duck session, lunch session.
I have a comment. On page 13, number 16, about the school nurse at Arlington. I realize that it's retroactive, so, all right, so it's been taken care of already. But I do have difficulty with that, especially that we're paying her $50 an hour, approximately, for 15 hours. And it's the students choosing to do this because it's an after-school program. So I, next time, I would like to have more discussion on that before, before it's approved.
I know, Mr. Burns, like, we just, we have to be careful of that, Mr. Rapp, because this is part of the child's life, pig. And you have to, you just have to be careful what we do.
Even though it's a PTO function?
Yeah, because it's, we pay, remember, we pay for that young man that was with the football team, that was the manager of the football team.
Yeah, but that was, but the football team is a board of Ed sponsored function, not a PTO.
I get it, but you have to understand that there's certain programs that this youngster needs to, and I don't disagree with Mr. Rapp for saying, but, you know, I just want you to understand that this is something that there's not a whole lot of wiggle room with.
And I guess if we had discussed it before it happened, then I would feel more comfortable with that.
Well, it came to me after the fact, I can't, I can't help that. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I go up for the public, any comments or questions on the agenda item only. I will open up again for the public, any business that may be able to come into the board. Do you have any questions, comments on agenda items? Please come up, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and I'll entertain a motion to accept and file superintendent's report.
Exactly.
Mr. Balki?
Yes, except for I have noted.
Mrs. Backer?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes, with the exception noted.
Mr. Rosinsky?
Yes, with the exception I have noted.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukulian?
Yes.
Mrs. Pratt?
Yes.
And Mr. McEnroe?
Yes, and as a result, the board voted 9-0 approving the memorandum agreement with the Sable Education Association. Mr. Syak, you're delegated to New Jersey School Board Association. It's my understanding you have some very great to say.
Yes, my brother's wedding was excellent, which is why I couldn't defend the DA.
Thanks for saying that.
So I have Mr. Bishada give the delegate assembly report briefly.
The meeting was held at Mercer County College on November 16th. And the good thing about this meeting was it was a two-hour meeting instead of a three-hour meeting, so. But some of the speakers are long-winded, if you know what I mean. I asked Kevin to give him the sign of three, three sentences or less. He'll learn, but anyway. Very quickly, Jason Jones became, was elected unanimously to the vice president of legislative, I'm going to mess this up, litigation.
Legislation of resolutions.
Right, okay. He said, he thanked Mr. Syak as past president for his help along his way of going about this. The other issue that was brought up was about the superintendent's contracts, which the, they did not act upon because at the end of the calendar, which would be June 30th to 2016, this supposedly fades into the air. So they're not going to take any action of increasing or decreasing the cap, or opening up the cap on salaries for the superintendents. And Sable's ahead of their time because now the New Jersey School Board Association is going to have a parent portal, as we would call it in Sable, where parents can call in through the internet and ask questions about the state budget, about issues pertaining to class, classes, et cetera, what's offered, different programs. It's a whole new thing. It's just getting started, there's pieces being put together and it'll probably be all running sometime in June or February 2014. And that's the submission.
Excellent, Mr. Bishada.
Thank you for attending. No committee's method, I recall, in the negotiation, we talked about that. For discussion, anybody have any ideas for discussion?
I have a quick question. The consultant for the redistricting, do we have a timeframe for his presentation?
December 3rd.
December 3rd?
Yeah, we're going to send the parent link out. I am attending the Samso School PTO meeting tomorrow. I will announce that. We will be sending the parent message out, inviting the public to the meeting. We'll all be up together. A nice thing under discussion, again, Mr. Bishada. One time, floor cracks on the B wing, second floor. They're getting bigger, longer, and they're going into the, coming into this area up here and going into the old section. I think what we should do is have our architect come in and review this matter because, you know, they're just across the beams and it looked like a snake crawled through the hallway. That's how the cracks are spreading and there's more of them. So I'd ask to have the board approve having someone come read in and investigate this before we do run into a serious problem. Dennis, aware of the...
First time hearing Mr. Bishada tell me that he had the exact...
Did you look at that? I went up to see it and yes, I looked at him.
I haven't been in the building.
Okay, have for some. Dennis, take a look at that.
I'll have Dennis.
Were these the same cracks from the last one?
Yes. It's not only the same cracks, there's more cracks. And the cracks are running the length of the hallway from, into the old section, which would be the L wing. They're running into that and they're running into this new hallway that's right outside this wall. They run in the same direction of the beam? They're, they're running perpendicular. Horizontal and vertical. They're running across the beam.
That's a curve.
Okay. One other thing, Mr. Syak, I, one of the things that really eats at my tailbone here is the fact that there's not enough schools honoring Veterans Day. Three-quarters of the school districts in New Jersey were open on Veterans Day, which I think is a disgrace. I would ask you to come up with a resolution, have the board approve it, that we send something to New Jersey School Board Association asking these schools that should be closed in honor of our veterans. This past November 11th was the 95th anniversary of Amistad. I'm going to screw this one, Armistice Day. I participated here at the Borough Hall at 11/11/13. And I think, and I rode through East Brunswick and they were open. And I'll tell you the truth. Men have sacrificed their lives. Mr. McEnroe's a veteran, he put 20-some years in. And I think something should be addressed to these people that give their time to defend this country and maintain our freedom. And the least they can do, if they can't close, then have an auditorium filled with veterans and let them explain what happened either in World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, or Afghanistan. I think this is something that should be done because it's a state and federal holiday.
Actually, we've already done that.
Didn't I go to the meeting?
Yes, this board, and it is in reference to the same issue, this board adopted a resolution and it basically, it says exactly the latter part of what you indicated. NJSPA believes that every single school district should be able to make their own decisions.
NJSPA believes that every single school district should be able to make their own decisions, so NJSPA isn't gonna mandate that any school district close on any individual day, but there is policy on the books that specifically strongly encourages local school boards to hold programs or close for Veterans Day at their discretion, but that policy already exists, Mr. McInnes actually testified in full dress uniform, before the delegates.
I had my, I had the stick, and there was...
Yes, and I actually, I have a photo of him, it actually made school clear, so I can...
Then let's look at, maybe our legislators can do something about it.
The best, the best thing to do for something like this is for the veteran schools, and Sable is a very, one of the reasons I'm here, is it's a very veteran-friendly town, is the veterans to show up to school buildings, and put pressure on the schools, you have to close, I mean, that's the only way that's gonna happen, and some communities are more veteran-friendly, or they're more lively, but Sable has, and I haven't seen this in a lot of towns, a very active BFW, American Legion, they work together, they have a veterans' allegiance, and it has a lot to do with Ken Cal. Some towns don't have that, you know, and, you know, it depends on the demographics of the town, all that kind of things, but the only way that's gonna do is the veterans go there, and you, don't you remember, you may not have been on the voyage, remember we still have meetings in the library? And a whole bunch of veterans came, because somebody said in the town that they were gonna be open on Veterans Day.
That's right, that was you.
And, and they all came to the meeting, they were calling me unpatriotic, and I'm looking, I'm saying, why'd you guys here?
Like Columbus Day.
Well, Columbus Day, a guy came, said he heard somebody from Midland. Listen, I got no argument with that, I, you know, I agree to a hundred percent, but...
Well, actually, specifically to Cereval, Eisenhower always did a program, I didn't see anything this year, did they not do it? I didn't, I didn't get the invitation this year.
I'm not sure if Eisenhower did, but I would say that the issue we asked, that that's the job.
And if you look, you know, again, to my very track to Sable, and proud of the fact, and if you look, and I don't know if anybody picked it up in the agenda tonight, we also approved a new club, which is Support for Troops Club, which is run by, I believe, an English teacher here in the district as a volunteer, and I'm gonna, you know, I got a note here to send an email tomorrow to thank her and ask her if there's anything I can do to help, or what that's all involves, I could do that, in that world, if they wanna reach out and help troops overseas and that type of thing, it's a lot of fact, but look, you're not gonna get an argument from me, but I think it has to come within the district, and I don't think the state New Jersey School Board Association is gonna force a district to do anything, it has to come within the district, you know, with township to do that, but I would certainly appear again, if I needed to.
I'm just looking real quick to see what kind of position.
We could rally up the troops, that's not a problem. All I gotta do is promise the guy's beer, and he'll come here, and he'll do all kinds of stuff. No problem. All right, very good, at this point, I guess we'll open up the public for any business that may come to the board, if there's any questions, comments about anything, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none? Going once, going, oh, come on up, come on up, both in a microphone, please state your name and address for the record, and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, good evening, my name's Annette Cheeza, and it's regarding the Arlen speech therapy therapist, is, I guess it's for Mr. Burns, I appreciate your phone call that I received last week regarding the substitute speech therapists, two of them will be starting, I was wondering if there was a plan in place for what they've already missed.
Yes, absolutely, we have a, which is a situation where we had hired a speech therapist for Arlen, who was extremely qualified for a population there, unfortunately, there were a number of situations where that person did not fulfill her requirements for the position, as a result of that, I did contact an agency, so I met with the two speech therapists, who I'm happy to say are veteran, retired speech therapists, so they're gonna bring an added dimension to our services at Arlen, with them last week, one will be starting tomorrow, one will be starting on Friday, as well, in fact, both will be there on Friday, and so all the past services, as I explained to you in the phone call, will be made up for those children.
So makeup will start, so then they'll still be behind what now?
Right, the advantage we're gonna have now is, we're gonna have these veteran speech therapists providing services, we'll be hiring a new person to provide the services, and, you know, when life gives you a lemon, you make lemonade, and so one of the nice things about this whole experience will be the fact that we're gonna have the advantage of having two veteran people, while the new person, and so we'll be able to bring more eyes to our speech program at Arlen, and as a result of that, I believe that we're gonna be much stronger in the long run, because we're gonna have just new, new blood, in terms of looking perspectives, in terms of how our students are doing, and as a result of that, our children are gonna have the advantage of being able to work with a number of different people, and so we're gonna get the advantage of having those different viewpoints being brought to our students, and so we think that their program's actually gonna be strong in the long run, we don't, we didn't design it that way, but that's the way it just turned out, unfortunately, because of the performance of the individual we had hired, and her not being able to fulfill her requirements, but as I explained in the phone, that we'll be forward with that, and all the children will make up every single minute of all those services.
Thank you.
Come on, stop.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll accept.
Mr. McInnes, actually, I found the Veterans Day clause, and it reads, NJSPA believes that a free and public education would not be possible without the sacrifices of the men and women who served and fought for our country, and those who died to preserve our democracy, people should be made aware of the contributions of our military veterans, and the significance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and it also goes on to say that NJSPA believes that because Veterans Day is a federal and state holiday enacted for observance and commemorative expression of our veterans' sacrifices, public schools are encouraged to consider all means of observing this holiday, including the possibility of closing school, this would provide the opportunity for students and staff members to participate in these commemorative events.